Good evening and welcome to the town of Dayton, Illinois. The school is taking first. If you'll take notice of the exits, we've got one here. We'll come back through the hallway and another on this side. If you'll stick with the flag. My pleasure to be here to the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, one empire, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The public hearing, and I understand that Senco is pushing until November, right? They're just getting up over it.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, we need, uh, yeah, so we need to...
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until the November 16th meeting.
Can I have a vote on that?
No, second.
Second. Okay, Jason?
Good, nice.
Right. And I, yes. And, uh, we should go to law.
Good evening. I don't have much to update the board on, just wanted to come tonight to let everyone know we are still working on things like the DC. I do, uh, address the weapons and the tax, and also the health department, which, uh, but we're kinda at the DTC first. Uh, so I just wanted to come tonight if there's any other questions, I know we did revise the plans, gave a memo, uh, plus two bullets, a brief, my comments at this point. And we are, we have engaged a survey or two, formalized the lot by change, give the new property needs and bounds, so there's work behind the scenes happening.
So Chairman, this previously the type two action subdivision, so, uh, presumably we're on for, uh, yeah, that's all right, now that's working. Uh, we'll just be continuing the public hearing next, uh, down, down the, October? You think you'll have your submission by then?
Yes.
DC?
Yes. So October, not in the year.
So we'll push the hearing to October, I think.
If that's the board's desire, yes.
Motion for pushing the hearing to October. So, okay.
Second.
We'll go to the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, so.
Uh, the applicant also gave formally ask for waiver request, so that the board chief of the studio could go ahead and grant them those waivers. There was a waiver request for 13-12 each, which is trees 12 inches and greater for the entire site. Uh, nobody got trees within the work area of our show. And then 130-18A6, which is trees eight inches and greater, and again, they did. Uh, look at all the trees within the area of service, as you consider what trees might be bombing the project, but, uh, but it does seem, uh, a little bit much to have in big trees, you know, not as big a right, no matter.
So the only, the only work that is being considered is a drive.
Well, yeah, removal of existing trailer, and then they're gonna construct a new house, generally in places where that trailer was, produce that exist and do well. And, uh, and a farm trailer, he will also back the property, which crosses the back lanes and the last side stream, which is why they're reporting the DC also for, or 15, or 24, which the town has a water resource permit, which when the DC is involved, we tend to maybe back off of that. So we're kinda waiting on the DC to determine guidance and answers. As part of the public hearing process, we have to have a public hearing and water resource permit and a subdivision, which is why continuing this.
So as we were talking about earlier, the water resource permit is only for the driveways, um, and it's only coming before us for the lot, uh, real line in.
Yeah.
Not being developed on the property.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's removal of trailer and construction of places.
That falls under our, our interest as well, or is that only a permit for that?
The plan is, is you're making sure that the lot for the creating has all the water elevations needed to put that outside.
Okay. Now, uh, the only, the only part we have to get is just to, you know, on the map, uh, it's, um, lot number three, which can be any parcel in the rear, that it, that is not, that's not buildable lot. It's gonna remain.
Just a clarification for the board, your lot is connected to the lot where the new house will be, so, uh, you need to buy the, the trailer, the real trailer.
So how, how would the, their lot be connected, is there a third reason for it to cross lot number two, I think, so?
So lot three means another one of that farm trailer crossing the, the street is leading back to that lot, and safely in that lot. So lot three is gonna have the new house and the rear lot, both part of it.
Oh, okay.
So there are three reasons there, other than the existing reasons to use the cattle paths underneath the railroad.
I'm sorry, keep it just reminding, which is, where's lot number one?
Lot one, okay.
So, uh, which, uh...
Right, but let me say, if you want, the reason says lot two and lot three is because it's part of the old subdivision, San Fran subdivision. Lot one was a San Fran lot. The, the dealer font.
So there's no, if it's lot two.
He's debating the known culture of these lots as they work from that file map, so as to not create some confusion out there.
Yes, the slithered that L shape.
Yeah.
When we call that.
That was, from the original file map, that was intended to be an easement over the lot. The county file had a tax parcel, so there's three tax parcels.
But only two pieces of property.
Lot three from that subdivision, the D, has the two tax IDs, it's one parcel. It's confusing, but this will actually clean that.
So you're concerned right now, you're only interested in these waivers, at this point, which...
Yeah, it's, it's more, it's more, I'm going to grant them those waivers, I would, in, in terms of...
So, I guess to avoid the cost of having to put them on plans, is that...
To, 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 to,[589.34][589.34][S04.41][S04] to, 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 to,[592.74][592.74][S04.41][S04.41][S04.41][S04] to, 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 to,[593.14]
So it does, basically does.
That's bad.
Which, which, I wouldn't say is bad, but it just doesn't make its way there. And clearly, you have a weapons box out there. Urban weapons, as I'm reading, that kind of situation. How to find swell that runs from one side to the other. Yeah, I know you mentioned salt and sand, and that's a leaves.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I.
You still have a little area where there's some closed contours in there.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it takes me to get down there and take a look at it, because I can't see any evidence of that. Yeah, so, um, I, I think it's probably not much to do about nothing, because the county, they wasn't sure about it, but it just, okay. So, I don't know if, if the question is, is, let's take a look at it, unless it's in terms of separation, if they can have it anyway from the end of that pipe, but it's nothing to find, or the public park, it's not going to get crazy about why the separation was necessary. If, if it's something, and I guess the question is, is it, is it something where the county will be looking for some kind of easement? Do we show that continues, is it, you know?
I thought the county, you know, it's the county's part, so.
And they're not.
Whatever, whatever the county says, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, alright. The other point is, I think, again, I haven't even been on to like a look at, a little bit of the pipe.
Yeah.
Alright, so on the high side, um, Beacon Road, that pipe doesn't sit flush, it sits up. So, drainage works the way that, where the sewer, I think that's the reason, except for. There may be, you know, some, some hole back there, has, has served as kind of a little hole-in-the-pipe, right? Until water gets out, it's also the next way out. That's something to take a look at as well. So, I think in terms of drainage, I've had on this property, that, you know, I don't see anything being there, can be then verified at it. And the reason that they could find these, these plugs, was they were just basically overgrown. I don't know how much water actually was through those. And again, when, when I was out there at Will, he was like, this is strange, I've never seen anything to pipe, it's all by the county. The, um, there's a parcel that's right here, which has also been sold from another party. So they went ahead and didn't see more than four, forget there's a lot. There's a lot, so it didn't happen on here. That type doesn't show up on that survey. Again, really significant, I don't think the water or anything, so. That's, that's where I'm at on that. Yeah, if you want to vary, go walk it out, I'll try to do that. Beyond that, I think there was additional comments, although you provided this, but I guess we have to be, I can clarify turnaround areas or fire apparatus.
Yeah, it's, it's not really about the turnaround areas, it's a apparatus operating area for the code. Uh, and the one section of the code that the board does, that says, code says within twenty-five feet of the fire, they're not going to pull a piece of wiring around, stop to a working structure fire, and then twenty-five feet of the structure to burn. So, just if you can just move them out, you know, maybe that twenty-five and a half degree away.
So I guess I have a question, if that's pretty standard, saying the town, spent that for a couple of years. Is this, is this something you want, just what they want paid, or that you want just.
Yeah.
Now, the type service, like, work equipment?
Yeah, one of the comments we had before also was about the turnaround areas, so if you have that, just a two-car parking area, kind of pops off the end of one of those, from each driveway.
Right.
You might be able to use that part of it as well. It's really supposed to be general, generally within no more than five percent of the outwears of eighteen feet out-to-out, uh, on their ladder truck. So, that's kind of what they're looking for, is to make sure there's some stable spots on their outwears to come on.
And that's, you know, you can kind of make it whatever you want. To me, it kind of contradicts the factors, where you're trying to move as little as you can, but you gotta put this thing in, and you gotta make trees out of it work. But, how do you do what you want? I mean, done that, whatever works. Most words short, that's my spiel. If you have anything specific else you want to talk about, certainly here with this and three.
Did you, did you mention about getting a conceptual approval letter, please?
Yes.
Okay.
And he's like, the driveway locations, we're gonna have some areas where, you know, some shelters down and so forth, probably, I gotta get this like this, this and that, and stuff, so.
Which one driveway is Beacon Road, it's probably a hot pole too, right after?
Which guy?
Uh, I think it was the next one.
Not that one. Is here?
I think there's an utility pole showing on those, isn't there?
Where in the middle?
Yeah, well, not in the middle, just on the edge, maybe, might have moved it.
We could survey this off through three feet. Alright, well, well, I mean, we can make that work, I just tried to come up with a detail here, I could spend this, and the, the intent is try and get it in there, so we don't have to take it down. But, there's, the county owns a triangle here, so, so we'll, we'll show what we need here, and then really coming back from here, along here, is basically a lack of, lack of a terminal, red elevation. So we're gonna have to just cut it down to black elevation. Or that the fire was.
So then, regarding the, uh, the two spots you were talking about, off the driveway, so they could set up a fight, a fire, where do you want them to go next?
No, I mean, basically the fire, I would have just said, that the code says within twenty-five, but that doesn't make any sense to that.
Right.
Obviously, it makes sense to me, but you'd never do that to the.
Right.
Fire dragon, whatever, right. Um, so.
Just to get basically.
Any comments on that?
Just get it, so it's twenty-five or more feet.
So all he's doing is moving those.
Yeah, just moving the rectangles.
The rectangles, but they don't necessarily require them to do anything in the way of a black top?
No, but if, but if the driveway is in a big fill or a big cut, then we have to say that the cut has to be expanded out to give it width. Or if it's a big fill, and the fill has to be expanded out to give it that width.
Like, okay.
Or it drops off.
But it doesn't apply to these.
No, at least, at least in a certain sense.
Well, we're not the driveway, we're reading that, but it's gonna be pretty close to the grid.
Yes.
It has, it's not shown. It's, it's gonna be pretty close, and it's not gonna be a lot of rain associated with the driveway.
And they're basically going to fight the fire from wherever they can anyway, if they have to go there.
Yeah, I think, yes, yes. The other thing is, is like, you know, the plowing process is supposed to get reviewed by the county also, so technically, somebody's probably not gonna build that perfect rectangle that much.
But I mean, she required a building.
Yeah, no.
It's just for. For, you see those light gray rectangles?
Yes.
So that's your, that's the intended location for the fire apparatus?
Yeah.
Which is kind of close to the house, it's at a, at the last point from all that.
I mean, it's not too lucky, it should come like before the house, rather than after the house, which is still gotta get pretty close.
Yeah, generally around twenty-five, if you can get it, or a little bit more away, further away.
And again, I'll just say, each other, pardon, do anything within that gray area, I guess they clear and clean it.
I was looking at the graph there.
What's that?
I was just wondering if the graph there.
Yeah, well, it's just. Like, it's a stable, you were talking, you can't be able to bleach it or anything, but you can't recover. But I think you might get, probably, it shouldn't fall, because that's how we're going to fall in that, well, I'll put it down. My question, you know, meaning ended before I could ask this, how is the fire department supposed to know where they're fighting every day? Five years from now.
It's nice to have it here, they have a lot of, a lot of technology, they got open, or we might call, maybe a certain address, they're giving certain information. Um, so not, maybe not at your house, but they do have, they do have a system that'll help give. I don't know if you might say that at all.
Yeah.
Around the forty-five.
I don't think it necessarily means this is their designated area.
Right.
I think it's just demonstrating that there is a, and they can figure it out when we get there, as opposed to a subdivision that doesn't have it.
Right.
They don't demonstrate, maybe there's subdivisions that don't have that ability to have room enough for their apparatus. And the code is saying, no, you have to have a place, and it showed on the drawing, I mean, no. And ultimately, they're inside where we put fire.
For sure. We're not doing what they have to do, because they can't talk.
Right, five feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one way, that's one way of the fact, you know, of course, with the driveway, or whatever, it's one of the questions that's up.
Yeah, my other question is. So, our action tonight, basically, is to.
So, there were, not, we've already surveyed, the theory is over, uh, there are no, that's one of the two that's. And the way it works is that, the agency does respond, it's, it's, no reaction. So the board can declare something they need to see, or it's warranted to see, or to react.
Did we have a public hearing yesterday?
No.
No.
I think to make a motion to declare ourselves as lead agency for a, for a, secret review for this unlisted action.
I'll say it.
Me?
On the table?
Aye.
Alright. Maybe.
So. Now, the board's not the agent.
Yes.
What they've asked for, and I understand there's a couple of them, but I've got to hear, and I understand the board is, you know, the parents want six months, like, you know, all the other projects, so.
Right.
But, obviously, would like to get out, and play a lot, like, a lot of layouts and changing much, actually, to get a lot of from the counties, or so, to, to, to. Move the driveways, get the buildings, and the whole, we just gotta get information. And, I suspect we have to, maybe, or perhaps, you know. Would like to petition the board, maybe, the next level, just, you know, we were called here.
So, we do have some questions, right? You think, Dan, about the COVID price?
Well, there are other, I'll just. Because the, the map shows the class. She has, she has nothing, but I'm, I'm not excited, probably said what happened there. We had a pretty significant rain on Monday, and it was wet in the lower area, there was stinging on the plants and everything, so I knew that it was water, it was sitting in a temporary. There's a eight-inch pipe that allows it out, it's up a little high.
Right.
So, there's some drainage, and it's trapped by the driveways, so really, you can't, make sure the driveways aren't impacted during storms in the future. Although they're not that covert, and anything else, it's hard on the eight-inch or some other practice, you know, that would be. Yeah, you know, if, if he's to run the, the calibration, we're gonna say, say that this is awful lot of all the council here. Because, you know, that, that stream, if you run, I just ran a pretty little stream, that's over there on it, and says there's about a hundred thirty feet of drainage there. So, um. So, so, Sean, I just have to decide the road.
If there's a road that has a trail on it, it takes kind of.
It's kind of like, you know, the doors, it's kind of just drains from that culvert crossing from Beacon Road, and it kind of comes down. It's not really a fine, per se. Uh, it's.
The shed coming in, you know, instead of focusing in one area, just comes down, there's a shed.
Yeah, more than likely, it's kind of the, the contour isn't. But like I said, it is, there must be something, it's either holding back some of that, the drainage area, or.
There's a lot of trees there, too.
See, I don't want to get into situations where. I'm swelling, or it's kind of a trench here, it's three and a half.
Right.
Leave all that alone.
Yeah, it sounds like it's, the way the pipe is, it's not doing its job, it's cold, it's sitting high, it's actually acting like an overflow.
It's on the right practice, it's a little elevated on the far side.
How long is that pipe in there, do you know?
Well, you said it's an RCP, which is a concrete pipe, so it's not that long here. They don't, they don't, they, several, really hard, almost, it's one, you know, plastic, usually, issue.
So, can we lower the, lower that pipe, or make it useful? Can we lower it a lot on the side, on the residential side?
I think they're more useful than, be it, they lower the one, remaining road to allow, to allow. And what's happening on our side, you know, I don't like that our side. Closed contours, just pogs, you know, it's, it's relatively good soil, so it's, it's perfectly able to infiltrate the.
Well, it's Shapiro, probably used for sale, which is the piece across. And, when that happens, if someone goes to the ground with that, then there might be, this might be addressed.
That might be, that might be the legitimate discharge from there.
Right.
Or they're gonna have to deal with what we have.
Right, they're gonna have to do a virtual work.
Right.
And make sure that they're not pushing more.
Which may, may be a good decision.
But, I'm, I'm just saying that the county thinks someday they can shut that road, and when they do, they, they work on that culvert, and they come in, they say, this, this culvert isn't, isn't. Where water, get that water across the road, and real off, more time, and see if you want to shrink that.
That does, when it goes across the road, it's not jamming.
Well, it goes, they're saying it comes into this person's block, I'm, I'm just posing this scenario. And if the county comes in, and they build a little, they lower that pipe, and make it, I don't know, they may just lower it. Does this neighbor come into the town, and say, hey, what happened, I don't, I don't want to turn that water on.
The county, so the county, so above the county, or what, the fire, the firefight?
Yeah, so, if you can get something, no conception of driveway locations, the, the.
Yeah, no, all, that's all for.
So, I mean, you, you did provide that, that survey, you know, that ecological solution survey. And then, you indicated, in comment number three. Partially satisfied, it was that, before, after ecological solutions gave us that stuff. Because they're saying that there is no weapon in that property, but yet, we're bringing it up here, how completely is going to happen?
Well, it's not really necessarily his jobs, dude, I don't know. He felt like there was no weapon there, I, I was just pointing out that I wanted to kind of keep that open, because I knew what was going on, because there was a stream showing up at the G I. But, you're probably not really going to be a stream. I don't know, there was, the homeworks, the locations that showed that there's a stream that runs through the property. But yet, there's not, you know, there's not, there must really be a plumbing channel, per se.
I mean, that was a good thing to look for, I would actually guess that at some point, there was a stream there. When they built the road, they, you know, they disrupted the hydrology, and. Obviously, the pipe was too high, or maybe, it's only raining out of show, or the pipe, that doesn't reach, so.
Right, so. This might make it to our, we're still in Lake Road, and then cut off to, um, Charle's, maybe, or something, you know?
I don't know. It's almost, you almost call it a bandit call, though.
I mean, only thing I would say is, I mean, it doesn't, on our parcel, on, just a county parcel access, which, you all need, seems to be rarely reachable, and show there is a special order, you know, actual, there will, there's nothing else, so, it does show that, or, and what we're doing that. You know, when we hire a consultant out there, we initiate the A S, maybe, for that, but, I don't know. That's three quarter of show, or, I mean, the heroes are approximately, on the other side, like Charle or something, it's gonna catch up, so you hire a consultant. I don't know, they work at it, they work, I don't know. I don't know, you know, you know, I don't know.
When is, when is, uh, the county coming?
Huh?
The county where it's being moved.
Oh, yeah, I was out there. Yeah, I, I finished with them, basically, on field visit, looking at driveway locations, and then looking at that pipe, first.
Yeah, so just get a letter from them about what they want to do, if there's anything that needs to be done with the drainage. On the driveways, locations. And then we have another big thing, is just bringing everything up to one thirty-eight twenty, so that when, when we're planning a order, it's ready to close, public hearing. It's, it sets the shot clock off, and they have a certain amount, so. For the deal, the other plans, and that, that, where you're taking, to be able to.
First of all, you have one thirty-eighteen, which is that sketch.
Uh, that is, that is sketch, yes.
Then you have one thirty-nineteen?
Uh, twenty.
There's not a time, no, there's just a. But there, there's a preliminary plan of time, so it's one.
Yeah.
Alright, so, you know, what I noticed, who was the sketch plan, incorporates much of the preliminary plan requires. Couple, couple more details, relative to preliminary, I can make your flat, things like that, so, I mean, nothing that's untruthful or unreasonable, you know what I mean? I understand that, you know, we have a public hearing, a close public hearing, or something, for, there are very specific deadlines for this, or make some kind of decision, preliminary, yeah.
So what do you say, we just pull off the, just finish?
Well, no, what I like, what I'm saying is, I like to schedule that, I like to schedule that hearing, and also, obviously, we can add some avenues, or rest, or, we certainly provide you additional time, so you're not strung into that, 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 you're like, that, that.
So, I'm assuming the way that he, he shot clock?
I don't see us immediate, but, I mean, it depends pretty well, detail at this point, so.
Yeah, the only thing is, is that there's going to be anything that's all out of power, that has to be addressed, and if it continues on, no, the plan order is all tired, it's a journey of public hearings.
Yeah, it does look like, and, uh, it's, uh, you fill up the agenda with things, and sure, we go, before the schedule, and so, what's, uh, happened?
And I, I mean, I think at this point, this plan will almost be a final form. That's almost the intent of the board, I mean, you're, you're as much as a lot. I mean, if, yeah, if we're a final form, then, the others aren't, they're, I mean, and again, depending on the board field, not based upon fact, and also, to move through the health department, you got those tickets taken care of. Um, you know, you may be asking for a preliminary file, but I think this.
That's usually.
I feel that, well.
So how about this, so, how about, consider, right, uh, this as an option, if, if me, uh, schedule. Or, with what I'm suggesting, um, you wait for the, the, uh, clock, the rush up. And then if you don't have a, you let, let the league know that you're gonna push till, uh, the public here. And what they're, they're just taking off the agenda, is that, I'm gonna have to.
I won't, but I can ask that after, or something like.
Uh, how's that, you know, for that?
It's up to you guys, if you want, if you want, you see some of the. Why do you, the board, what's that?
So you can talk.
Situation, because I didn't, just, just drag.
I mean, it's a, it's a problem.
I'm just saying, when you guys, you guys, you guys, you guys, you can say this.
Maybe I should, uh, be confused, I didn't, I didn't. I think so.
Okay.
So, I think the biggest problem with why these things are always, have either the health department, or connected to one of the, you know, uh, where the work, or, or, that, and that goes on for years, you know, it's. And that's what I think is happening right now. Um, I don't really, they, they have people that bad, I'd like to think they go to the water department or the health department in advance, and anticipate these issues. And you're saying you've got it, you're actually wanting the health department?
Yes, logistically, you understand, because if they go on, they're looking to plan until it has gone on, because if it changes, then they're jerking around, and you know, changes and so forth. Again, that was not, not based upon what this board told me, so.
You know, those, uh, you fear to go to preliminary levels, it's made it that, there could be major changes.
Right.
Once we're committing a schedule, that doesn't mean there's, you can't tell, uh, go from Florida to one other, or something, who can make a change. So I'm okay, uh, proposing, uh, playing, uh, here, and, um, I'm trying to. One year, one year. I have seen, man, if you could, if you could, uh, let's, the idols, uh, are missing, we, that. Who is looking at, to be there here, and seeing, maybe we still have this issue, she would be, of course. Being, of course, of course.
Yeah, I mean, what else is missing? And you're right, the, the, actually, number thirty dollars, you can't, that's all part of what common fourteen is. So, so. Like I said, it's, you can already put, put a decent foundation on here, but, you need to get a, you need to get a, sort of.
So, plot is, what, what is missing in the way of plot?
Well, plot is one that just shows a lot more than the bare.
And you know, it's, uh, the special ones, you, like, uh.
Uh, some of the scattered, right, I'm saying.
So we don't have this.
And that's only a catch, because I got both a lot on my show.
Yeah, once, once we do a public hearing, do preliminary, they prepare the plot, so.
I mean, I can have.
Adrian, you want to send us some of the comments that we were discussing before? We want the plot. Is, uh, that's satisfactory?
No, I just, all I'm saying is, I've, I've got a feedback, about the public hearing, so open it up.
Yeah.
And then. I really think about all that.
Oh, alright. Please, you did that. Alright, so which idols, because I see comments that are. Comments that are.
What happens is, it's a serious procedure, right?
Yeah.
The reason why the public here is so, just a lot, because we're in sixty-five, generation, by our, that means you also got a big, big secret determination. So, if everything is shown, proving that there's no environmental impacts, then.
Such a permanent, a secret determination?
Well, secret, I should eliminate that plot, but.
Still confused. No, but, hold on, I just, the only part, I'm thinking, this, this sketch plot is not. So, the time plot is not, start, until there's a final submission.
Right.
Okay. So that's, that's. And secret is, and you, and you made it secret determination. Alright, okay, alright. So we can move forward here?
Yes.
You want to make a motion? I'll make a motion to, um, set up a public hearing for next month, at the next hack, or maybe. In a second.
Awesome.
Alright, on the table?
Aye.
Okay, so. Second, then we'll do the discussion, because that's just contracting. We gotta, we're gonna need a secret determination, to go get from public first, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Now, we're, 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 that's, that's. I guess, if you can have the public hearing, I think it would require, and feel, which is, right? So, take.
You can't grant a preliminary rule without having a secret determination, please.
But we're not there. Okay, so the next step is public hearing? The next step, really, is for the final plot application, so, you should be having a hearing on final plot, not a public hearing. That's when, the final plot is, yeah, you know.
But ultimately, he has to get compliance from each one of those stakeholders. You can't just give up one, two, or the other one.
No, it's a little bit of a slow happening. Who told them all to put themselves in the search?
And when you're saying they're working on that?
Yes. We don't see how many public hearing, obviously, till that's sorted out. But initially...
What happens here, right?
In dealing with that issue, we'd like to get the other involved parties officially here at the A D C and get something filed, being a part, paperwork for the files, etc. Let's fill this out, yeah? Get all of this to join together correctly. And then we see that we can petition you effectively at that time if we could step up. Or we want to get over the last. Get it all first.
Is there a request for us to be lead agency?
Yes.
No, I'm prepared to draft. We need some circulation letter for you. I thought that there were a few comments on the 4th E A F and they did not those revisions out in the meantime. I would ask to do that before the circulation. So if they were to gauge plans and E A Fs, the number that a weekly... I'll find out some dates on that.
Well, they submit the E A F, they just submit part one, when we come out, just the first part. You have some, that's our, some of the questions on part one?
Yeah, there was, there were just, there was a bit of a...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, we're already the lead agency, I can't just, there's no reason why we wouldn't be the lead agency, so... There's no, for me, I would think this is a reason why we're declared lead agencies, right?
So we identified non-potential interested involved agencies. That circulation letter, the D C, the Department of Transportation, Department of Community Health, County Water, Rest Water Authority, County Department of Planning and Development, Towne Beaton's Own and Ward Appeals, which I don't think that they're going to be asking for a variance at this point, but just in case, Towne Beaton Conservation Advisory Council, Towne Beaton Highway Department, since we had Towne Beaton involved, and you can fire advisory board.
So when we make the resolution, we want to include the caveat that they, they, they're involved in part one, is that? They comply with your comments concerning the secret, prior to setting up. I'll, I'll, once in a while, especially, I'll make a motion that we declare lead agency. When they, uh, assuming, or, once they complete, uh, they comply with the... Concerns the secret.
They're just a clarification, it's declared for ten, uh, as lead agency. So we can start that.
Sure.
I'll second.
There's nothing else, I think.
Well, I see a traffic, I see some of the traffic impact, so... How did we, uh, intersection go down Route fifty-five, uh, here? How did that intersection, uh, Route fifty-five, if you can move, had that way, is it, uh?
Do me a hand, so I have not read it.
Did you have a look?
There's a substitute.
I have a substitute.
Uh, yeah, so there were four tables. Like, were the different levels of service. Which is about half a third of what you would have worked up. And what they did was they, they symbolized the intersection at fifty-five and people were called out here. And they also looked at the traffic. What we call a fish off right now. Fifty-five, maybe in the future.
Right, well, the first, and they were proposing almost, I think, I think, a hundred and sixty people. Probably did five years of first.
Yeah.
Right, and, and they, they didn't, uh, the impact was, was not significant.
Yeah, so, if you know what I have, I'm curious what... So the table, the table looks right, and... And the twenty-twenty-one existing for the A M peak hour. If the level of services depend on the direction you're going in that four intersections, it'll be B, A N. And then if you look at twenty-twenty, so the projected count of additional traffic as it comes in the future naturally, it'll be based on any other projects in the area that they're aware of. It's still a B, B, A, N. And twenty-twenty-six, which includes those additions plus this project, it's B, B, A, N, so. So they're, they're predicting no A M peak impact as a result of the project. Uh, P M peak hour is B, 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 A, in twenty-twenty-six, say. It's B, 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 for the twenty-sixth available. And B, 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 B for twenty-twenty-six. So there's a, there's a slight impact from A to B. Regardless of this project, it's like twenty-twenty-six, no government needs to anticipate that, and that's the cold valley road, uh, let's say, southwest now.
Yeah, so, I mean, just to clarify, A is good, meaning there's no... If A symbolizes, represents relatively good condition at the intersection. It's safe, on volume, B then progressively, as you go worse, B, see, what's the bottom line? F, I think, yeah, F?
I don't, I don't remember if it goes, I think it goes to D.
It did, you were seeing, you were...
Well, certainly, no, actually, so on page five, they go through level service, or anything that's... Uh, and it is F, represents the worst.
Yeah, right, so I, I just find hard to believe, like, because even as existing, that it's either A or B. Knowing, like, just driving, I don't know, this isn't time to play, or when you hear... How do you possibly grade it so well in its existing condition?
Because they have tried, and, and some of that has to do with, um... A lot of it is the games on the amount of time you're reading. And so since it's penalized, it's controlling a lot of time you're reading, so. It's a matter of how many times you're going to be coming to that link, you wait for it, it's red, you're pulling up, and you're finally getting through, it turns red again, and you're reading again. You know what I mean?
The line, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that kind of...
So you're confident with it?
Well, it's, uh, you know, it's prepared by the very, I mean, the firm colleagues, does a lot of traffic design work. Um, and, uh, of course, you know, the D O T has been looking at this, and it's a plan and order. Wishes they could, uh, also, um, team, traffic specialists to review it as well.
So, and the other, excuse me, I just want to make sure my mind is out there. And, and to say that we're in fifty-five, is it fifty-five minutes, is the number?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, say we're in fifty-four, and it'll have, according to his plan, and no impact at all. To that, yeah, not the car view. So, what impact?
A hundred and fifty?
Thousand?
So, so when you're, again, yeah.
It could also be a year, please. Saying, you mean, the intersection is just on the hand of New York, than what it's receiving now?
So we're to table one, talks to the, the P M, and A M peak hour generation based on this project. And what they use is, is, uh, station engineering manuals, which is very... And there's a new scope, and new scope is multi-family, residential. And so if they plug in fifty-four events, and it tells you what your typical, and means an outside.
This is on the state road, so state D O T, not...
Oh, yeah, correct, it's part technically, they're, they're going to have a public hearing, and they have people who come here.
It's going to be a short story.
And they need to know that based on our study, the community villages, that it's currently safe, and it will not be impacted by this development. And I don't know, I find that hard to believe, um, but, so maybe I need to cali, recalibrate what I think is dangerous. People driving around, it's not only a passing lane, driving around to get around another car.
So people on bus route.
And the first thing you get, like, all this, I mean, yeah.
People turn on the evening road, take a left, and they're fifty-five westbound. You are, people always pass on the right on there. And there's conflicts with people that are trying to go on, from the trip to, like, eastbound, and they're out.
Yeah.
They're all along.
And it's because they're waiting a while, and then, or maybe they shouldn't be doing that, you know? That's, that's, I think, but, uh, I just, like I said, you gotta, to calibrate... There are history accidents, is that considered a risk?
But the D O T actually tracks accidents, and, uh, you know.
The last few projects that I've gone through with D O T, they've been thorough. And it's also taken, in respect of time, to be comprehensive back and forth with them. As a result of that being much more cognitive of issues like this in the future. Um, like, they're various, looking at, uh, left turn lanes for almost every project that I've done in the last couple of years, it really... They want to see everything, really, grinding out, so.
I know it's the biggest problem, is, uh, fish off in fifty-five, you know, see there, which...
Well, that's...
It's actually like, left, uh, it is being, yeah, it's a left turn.
Yes, it's, we're gonna have to put that in. We, we submitted all those plans, it's like, optional, because we anticipated there was a good possibility after the traffic impact study, the D O T, at this point, we're waiting for left turn. We resolve ourselves with that.
Do you want the, the accident, the intersection, the C L, here, or?
Yes, I think it's pretty, it's pretty easy.
I think that'd be helpful, or, you know, just, if anything, just, don't, like, maybe, uh, fears that, and there's... Maybe there's, uh, a level of accidents that consists with, with all the other intersections, uh, fifty-five, you know, with this, you know? And it's just maybe, we just, you know, worry about that intersection.
Yeah, it's, it's a neat degree, you want to have, it's in the, one of those, uh, the...
Well, the, the, the D O T, they did, they did the airway job. And take all of that, and what I understand, I'm not completely...
They spent three million dollars on a study. Sue Pebble, you remember her?
No.
She was a governor's woman, you know, twenty years ago, or something along, you know, twenty years ago. She got a grant, and it was three million dollars, and I believe it was all consumed dealing with engineering studies. And the problem with, looking circle there, is the help and the bridge.
So a lot, a lot of times, what could happen about, when you're on the main thoroughfare?
Yeah.
That's the problem with the traffic.
Yeah.
This particular intersection has two cantibros that have a hot car on it as well. And so when you have those legs, those heaters coming in, you know, I think that that had something to do with it as well, there was some rate issues, there was some speed issues, as soon as you're coming down fifty-five, um, it was... Again, I'm not completely into it, but I understand that they did locate it one formally, and they did not find that it's the best solution for that.
The problem was the stream and the bridge.
Well, that cold water stream, like, uh, the, 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 the intersection, is it?
Yeah, on the, west of the, of the head, headlines, the Sierra Crest, there's a bridge there, you don't realize it. It's a pretty good stream, it was, huh?
Right, I remember that, yeah. And they all know that washes from stop and truck, which is through the property there, into that culvert, into that stream. They own the county one's property right off of, well, maybe eight feet off the corner of that building.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. The corner of actually, you know, fifty-five and, uh...
Headlines.
Yeah, eight feet, so it goes all the way into her apartment, where she spreads the, she has another...
I agree, Rob, I think that is, that is a, maybe, maybe they can start considering some way, and that piece of... Thought it would fall on this avenue, but, you know, turn signals, and right turn signals, or, or, something. Like, uh, like slipwings, whatever.
Well, like you say, we're hearing from D O T anyway, so...
Yeah.
I'm interested to hear what they have to say.
Yeah, if you listen, yeah.
Yeah, process is the approval, but they're gonna have to get them with D O T. And this is part of the D O T's review of the traffic impact study. If you want to have your own traffic consulting, we, we'll reach out.
So as far as I'm concerned, I don't know if you guys agree, but, uh, there's really no reason for us to do anything further until we get a legal, uh, decision, right?
You know, he's already committed that they're gonna do some more work, we're gonna do a lot of digging in, we're gonna do a nice survey, we're gonna do soil testing, and we're gonna look at the people, so. They're not supposed to be working the all sort of now.
Right, they, they can proceed with, with their, with their plan, um, but they may have to change it, depending on the answer they get. So it's, it's kind of like, uh, they're proceeding at their own risk at this moment, I...
And the, and the certification process takes thirty days anyway, so they would, in theory, this board could be, like, clear, it's up to me, it's in total, and that would be, okay, so. Hopefully, they'll have a nice one.
We're, we're very hopeful, um, we're gonna have a complete package for, with any kind of public hearing that's addresses everything, and everyone's input, so that it's not a drawn out longer than it is to be.
Hopefully, it's a good one, yeah. He does, yeah.
I did not, this time.
No, I, I got a question, Don's had a little, it was only, not all, but, he, um, the, the real long story short is that projects need to be sold in the middle of the hour. They had all sorts of agreements in place, it was ready to go. And, uh, I'm running to...
Actually, we, we, our basic goal is involved with the United States. I'm very excited, man. Well, I, I saw John here, and I, I didn't hear about it, so I left, and I just figured, somebody can figure it out, well, United States.
And just, just to finish off, Don, just basically told me that they made a lot of good progress. Uh, with the waterways, and water, three bags, and different numbers, so they matched it, the whole deal that was in place. And working on it, Don, sure, they, they made good progress, and it looks like it's moving forward.
So, you can't, what's gonna happen?
With...
This, uh, it's been approved.
Yeah.
Right, it's gotten through all the different phases of plan.
Yes, initially approved.
Initially approved, so, another developer's gonna buy it, we're gonna do what we always do, I guess, and grant the, uh, you know, I'm not gonna speak for the other board members, the extension.
Yeah, it, it would be my suggestion, I mean, they've done a lot of work recently, particularly, uh, you know, they built a period on their, it was the mall, and, um...
But what comes after? So, this new development, ordinary, yeah?
And conditional, conditional final, true?
Conditional final.
The, the conditions are basically down to, they gave us rec fees, and, uh, performance bond, and some other things, so. Uh, it's all, it's all, the reasons are closing up, because the current owners, you have close to performance bonds, they only have to try to save for the new developer, kind of close to performance bonds. So they're doing everything at closing table, and, uh...
Then you'll be called in the sign, right?
Right, so I actually have a possession right in my house.
And you've already, is there, we can put an escrow for each of these extensions, and you're...
My phone was holding up, this, uh, their approval of the water, not approval, the water, uh, who's worth?
Yeah, one resort authority, they, they had a deal, and the developer was told, oh, by the way, one resort authority wants X Y Z, and so, X, which was what was discussed, and approved. For sure, yes. And so, put the new developer back, instead of back in our seals, because it was completely different than what they agreed to before. And that was what led to the purchase clause, the patents for the product, you know, so, they had more to do with this. And I, I'm not giving the details, but it was, it was a higher...
Okay, I mean, what's, what, what are we waiting for from the board for the agreement between the developer and the board authority?
Well, we're waiting for it, of course.
Yeah, but it's really relevant to this board, I guess, so to speak. But, um, suffice it to say, once that closing takes place, this board will then resume, and finish this project.
I, I, it's a little near, that, I mean, it's subject to a real estate, why we're on hold on a real estate? Why, why we're subject to a real estate, that's...
Well, this is, this is just an extension request, not to satisfy that. It doesn't come back in forty. The my house will be signed by the chairman, as soon as I say all the conditions have been satisfied. And those people are all satisfied, except...
If the deal falls through, we continue.
Then the original developer has to post the bond, he's gotta make a pay session, he's, yeah, yeah.
So you're, you're pretty much...
All right, so we're not really waiting for some approval from the board authority, you just gotta do those, post the bond, um, give us the recognition fees, then...
Yeah, the, the one resort authority said, the hookup was fine. They came back and said, we need X amount of dollars, and it was expired, let's say.
That was, uh, back in...
Yeah.
A year or two ago.
No, that was pretty recent. They're back to closing on this, for the last two months.
Oh.
And, uh...
I thought they even already got approval on that.
They did, but they didn't come with the invoice. You gotta, it was a body, it's a...
It was a, it was a body, it's a frame, body changes. Oh, interesting, so, so the board authority asked for a lot, and they...
They must be that place, or something like that.
You're doing fine. I'm not gonna...
I'm not, yeah, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to... I, I just want to be careful, you know, with us getting involved with real estate transactions, why are we... That's, that, that has nothing to do with us, I have no authority to have someone leaving with my end deal with someone else, it's, uh...
No, an extension, I think the extension could, could destroy the deal.
We all, we were prepared. If you did, if you did directly extension, then it's expired, and then...
And then they have to shuffle over, and...
Yeah, that'd be awesome. We're not supposed to be concerned with market conditions, real estate, we can't take place on a...
This is under a serial, uh, extension request that...
They're tied up until it's a...
They are, yes, and they're, you know, down low.
Well, they discuss that, I don't see that, you're basically saying, we have to make that decision.
They're, they're within their right to ask for it, yeah.
Yes.
No. Yeah, we would, we would, everything we would have made, right?
I mean, this has been going on for years, if our laws change, and our, the way we deal with land, uh, our, our, the mine run laws and stuff, we, we want the opportunity for them to, you know, you can't just keep lingering a project along because you're going through...
No, there, there is a good, big reason for the extension, this particular situation. Um, and that is not at the fault of the original developer, I guess, so to speak, based on, on those stats, but, yeah, just, you know...
Like all the reasons, true.
They're actively, they're actively trying to, you know, close and to start the project, anyone who wants to start.
Right.
So, um, you know, the spirit of, of, uh, the, the conditions that are up, we're moving forward. So, yeah, under, just, uh, I'm understanding, if the D O T, uh, D C W W G were revolved and delaying this, and it was nearly a real estate deal, and he was trying to find a buyer, and extensions were going on for years, and changed, closed, and stuff like that, that's a difference. By all means, that would be very different.
Okay.
Yeah. We, we consider secret, and things like that, that's a good reason for it, right?
Well, it sounds like they had it done by next week.
So, once they send the resolution, extend that, clear out the two hundred day. The exception, if you go out in two hundred days, we bring it to March twenty, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. I thought they were expanding this closing to like two weeks or something like that. What are the, and now that we're involved in a real estate deal, what is their closing?
Uh, they did very good progress in their discussions with water resource authority, and that's... Um, and then... They're doing their time, so. We're, we're suggesting that.
Do it, you wanna, and then see what happens, with it.
You're saying, you're telling us, number one, you're making really good progress. And knowing with all the time, the bottom, the most effective way to make good progress. And, uh, you know, that, you know, closing is, you know, is moving. Let's assume ninety, and I think it's probably helped them out, it's gonna make the attorneys... What do you think, where do you...
All the current, they're negotiating, uh, I just can help you, the current, and the documentation I have, on, um, existing issues. Um, there wasn't, I want to say it was July, they actually got to the table, when this came to light.
Right.
Um, and, and, and...
And in fact...
They need to fix this before proposing, but they were actually at the table. Um, and so I sense that they've kind of gone back and forth.
I see, to Rob's point, uh, it, right, so, the, the cost became an issue, and that's what caused the delay in the closing, and, yeah, two minutes, so, I'm, I'm, I'm looking to, 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 to an extension?
Yeah, we consider a little bit of that.
I'll second that.
That would take it through September twenty-first.
September twenty-first.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it'll be a fair time.
Candidate, uh, yeah, yeah. Pretty, uh, candidate. So, so, we're, 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 yeah. Looks, uh, he's, he's only approved from May, which one, three, eight minutes, and that has, yeah, John, Eric, Jason, and John, that's it, so, they, they.
Who's that?
They can't, oh.
Jake, we have a whole, uh, Rob, and Jason, and John are here, he was also at that May meeting, but he's not here, so if you got a chance, so.
You may, you may.
I'm just kidding, I'm sorry.
I don't know, you're, you're.
I know, it's, it's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what, Jason?
No, I can, I, I, I can, I can. Jason, then, with July, he's here, uh, cloud is here, so, I don't know how.
I'm just, I'm.
So, cloud's here.
All right, you can call it here, we can turn back.
Yeah. The world.
I'm sorry, where is it, uh, Jason?
Wait, go right ahead, buddy.
You can, you can.
Go right on. Here, no worry.
Seven thirty.